Let's sign. So, uh, since you do have a quorum, uh, is that a form?
Yes.
Here's the form, yes. Yeah, of course. Yeah, so. Put it around. It's your court. Right. Okay, so we're waiting on Sam Bill, but to honor everyone's time.
And our votes.
Well, yeah. If anyone is traveling, I think Sam will not be attending.
He's still traveling.
Yeah. Oh, my God. Okay, so, uh, I'm going to open the meeting. This is, well, the January meeting of the December 17th, January 10th, 2022. Uh, let's begin with Professor Loomis. So the group of Jennifer here has been secured. Um. Sam, we're waiting on, and Sam will not be attending. Uh. So let's move to the minutes for December 2nd, 2021. Uh. So, um. You've got a motion, yeah, motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, and please, yes, uh, follow the table.
All right.
On the reports, um, uh, the sewer and water reports just came in. So they were not adjudicated yet, so we'll hold them for next month for the reports, uh, for the month of December. Uh, the connected reports for December 31, I suggest you maybe, any existing problems? Uh, can I have a motion to approve the December 31 laws on those? Yeah. Okay, all right. Yeah. Uh, moving on, um. We had successfully transferred a property that we thought had closed on at 926 Main Street. And so we're in the process of turning over ownership to, uh, Melissa Gassom Tova for 926 Main Street, after having satisfied all obligations and all conditions. Uh, so that's, that's successful. And there is a few material of, um, attention to building, uh, building obstacles to satisfy, you know, the conditions that we set in the state for the title. Uh, moving on, uh, we had originally closed the pedestrian bid on Lake Street because, uh, we had not been able to maintain it and to remove the ice. And it was being somewhat of a hazard and a liability to the birds. We have gotten a volunteer, Craig Chilling, who has offers to maintain and to, uh, uh, remove the snow and to address conditions on the earth during the winter. And we had several inquiries to keep it open for those who are walking in the village and walking dogs. So, uh, it's, so, uh, one of the issues that came up at the last four meetings. Uh, I wanted to report on the work that we've been doing on the property, the village property classifications, uh, that have affected the level of sewer building, uh, on properties or last year that were reevaluated. And we're in a, we're, and these two properties appear to have, uh, are in the process of curing the, the, um, condition that had been, uh, continued to increase more through the, by the classifying their properties as residential in the context of sewer law. However, we're in a bit of a quandary that we may want to think about this some more, but I have not found a way that we can address the problem that properties that have been classified are required to be hooked up to the sewer system for every equivalent dwelling unit. And that's by, by law, by the law. And there are at least six properties in the village which are unoccupied and have been unoccupied for many years. And but are paying, um, based on the, the characteristics of it being required to be hooked up to the sewer system. So. Um. You may want, you may want to, like, sewer owner, you may want to look a little deeper at that, but I have not found a way and it's, um, challenging for those property owners who have vacant properties but are paying large sewer bills as a result. And, uh, I think the underlying project is that the property owners have the ability to, to occupy those but have chosen not to, have chosen not to prepare them for occupancy in a manner that was the normal conditions. And so that is not, that should not be a burden on the village. That could be a limitation of a property owner to use the property in a manner it was still constructed for. So that's, that's the quandary where it is. Um. And we, well, largely not to deny, um, the requests, the requests for, uh, requests on our properties. But I'm just, I'm telling the standard for what it is. So what do you think in talking, in knowing about the sewer law? Okay, good standing. Uh. We. We have received the notice. Uh. Notice of discontinuance. Uh, we have accepted a lawsuit. Uh. Uh, the village and the home enforcement officers, uh, which decided to, um, allegations, uh, of the petitioners, uh, which are none of it. They took us down their claim. So there's another distinction in words that there was no longer any lawsuits or whatever. There's no, there was never a lawsuit or a claiming file. Um, so it's a discontinue, and that's, that's a good outcome. Okay, moving on, new business. So, uh. Diane, can you comment on the, uh, resolution regarding the village election home post that's to complete the, the, um, the town in part?
Yeah, I'm not familiar. Uh, basically, it's just that we were going to have the home post here at the memorial library. Um, it's going to be from 12 to nine, and it's going to be, uh.
Mary, what?
Hello, Diane. So you have a date, the date of the election?
I think all of them are.
Okay, on the subject of what, it's March 15th.
So March 15th, 12 to nine, we'll be calling here at the memorial library.
Okay, um, can I have a motion?
Motion to, uh, get an election.
Yes, uh, development, okay. It's down between the four policies. Uh, it's two, maybe, your, either. Okay, so then we have the second resolution.
And we've been civilized. Yeah, this is to, um, for the Department of the election pressure, um, with, um, Dan Baker and Dan Moore. Dan Moore is the election pressure, um, for the village election, and Dan Baker is the election pressure.
And, uh, we have a brief on what is going on. And, oh, we didn't have the fact of the last resolution. That's what we did. Uh, so all of the papers of, uh, the resolution regarding the following rights, Tom?
All right, all right.
Um, okay, all right. And so the resolution for the, for points of damage election? Uh, can I have a motion?
Motion to, uh, get that election.
And the second? Maybe. Uh, all of the papers?
All right.
Okay, all right. Uh, okay, so I'm reporting on the hazard mitigation plan. Um. The, oh, hazard mitigation plan is, is adopted, um, throughout the county, and it supports the, um, local administration that, uh, helps to reduce the insurance on properties in the first fifteen as a result of having the hazard mitigation plan. And this was drafted and put into the file with the general county planning board. And it, the gist of this comprehensive plan is to, um, develop strategies to not education of, uh, one education system to allow individuals in our municipalities to know about hazardous conditions, storms, um, floods, fires, uh, any other hazards. Um, and it recognizes the need to develop the volunteer community for our even less than fire departments for which all municipalities are struggling. Uh, and to develop strategies for better coordination among, uh, county, town, and village. Um. The, it's, it's a very comprehensive plan with eleven goals to ensure it seems about what we need to take some, to have some understanding of what we are able to do. And the actions that have been discussed for the village's improvement improve the, developing capabilities to address experience with our parallels from all the relative things for which the village can make some responsibility. Um. Uh, another action that's no longer, it's, is still in place is the removal of a mill speed grid which has been discussed as a hazard for flooding because of the capability to, uh, interfere with water flow. And, uh, so the, uh, other, um, aspects of it, if you want to go forward? No, no, only the, okay. Okay, so, uh, for us to stand in the game to, uh, to continue, uh, work in that area and to achieve collaboration with which are municipal agencies, we, uh, we are asked to adopt the resolution, uh, which, uh, with a multi jurisdiconal, all hazard mitigation plan. And it's defined in accordance with the Disaster Mudding Act of 2018. And we resolve, uh, those, uh, persons for the proceeds and adopt this multi jurisdicinal plan and resolve to execute the actions in the plan. Any, uh, discussions on this? Uh, I'm recording, uh, as Dan Haber is not here, and he's our flood liaison, and so that's the primary focus of hazard mitigation. So it really is in his authority with to, uh, to address and help move this forward. Uh, so he will be a more than him, than he does. Uh, so can I have a, a motion to adopt this hazard mitigation plan? So, um. Let me see. Can I have a second? Okay. All of the papers?
All right.
All right. Okay. Um. This year, we purchased, uh, a replacement vehicle, uh, a dump truck as our existing dump truck from 2009 needed significant repairs. So we purchased it and we put the old truck out for, uh, on an auction site. And, uh, we, we also closed this past Friday, and the high bidder was, it was astonishing, sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars for, uh, the, the old dump truck. And the village needs to take the valuable parts of the engine, the, uh, the dump capabilities and other component parts. Uh, but, so I'm looking for a, a motion to accept the high bidder for the sale of a 2009 silver, uh, thirty-five hundred, uh, dump truck.
What's possible?
Okay. Second? Okay. All of the papers?
All right.
Thank you. All right. And next item. The, we have the contract with the Delaware County Planning Department, uh, which is an annual contract for their services to support the village's planning, uh, the, uh, general board of materials, and in general to support our work in planning and development. Um, it's a contract that pays five hundred dollars for the county year 2023. Uh, I believe it's done valuable services, it supports our communities, and provided, uh, expertise and guidance, uh, that we, uh, use in our deliberation. So can I have a motion to approve the contract with Delaware County Planning Department in the amount of five hundred dollars?
Okay. Definitely with the contract.
Okay.
I got that.
Thank you. Next item, uh, so, uh, have the, uh, all of the papers?
All right.
Um. We, we have to change the contract from previous corporations for the construction of Lake, reconstruction of Lake Street. And we've been successful, um, in getting a, this, and that, there was, there was a locator on the project and qualified as reviewed by our engineering firm, Delaware Engineering, and we need to deliver to put in a, uh, a, a, a far sophisticated damage which we have not been doing in the past, which provides for penalties if they do not complete the project, um, in the course of the, the, the timeline of the damage that we're doing, and we accepted it.
Right.
The total, um, for the contract for the, the deficit on listed, two hundred twenty-three thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars.
There it is, please.
The contract for reconstruction of Lake Street is two hundred twenty-three thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars.
The jury's not working at here. I tried to bring it up, it's still on the whiteboard. I don't know where we're going now.
Uh, so, can I have a motion to approve the student contract?
So.
Thank you. All of the papers?
All right.
Yeah. Um. Okay, um. We are in the process of contracting for work at the village here to, uh, bring, uh, bringing the feeding, the facilities up to, uh, reasonable standards for the purposes in the project, for the home enforcement officer, for the shared supply, and for, uh, restaurants, for, you know, we have, um, uh, signs of the. Um. So we have probably four different trades that are involved in this. So, uh, and I wouldn't, as I said, we've been recruiting, um, contractors, and it's been challenging in its time. And one of, one of the contractors we approached was Paul Van Haas's son. And so I have, the, the, the contract had not been issued with, uh, the, uh, the competitive bids for the work for the building of a wall, for painting and the flooring, and he has been one of the contractors. So this is really a disclosure that we are considering and may choose to contact with Paul Van Haas's son. And, and Paul Van Haas is our coordinator. And that's a, the disclosure.
I know it's not covered time and time, but are there multiple contractors working on the project?
Oh, yes. Uh. There are multiple trades. Right now, there's only one, there's only one contract in place at the moment, and that's electrical, in electrical plumbing. So there are at least four trades that we're with. One. Then. We have been, uh, asked to help promote the use of a rural brand broadband survey that can help advocate at the county and state level for additional services in this area. So it's an advocacy that would allow individual residents to, uh, express their opinion about the importance of having, uh, cell phones, uh, internet access, uh, in areas that are light and safe. Um, so, uh, we'll be posting that, uh, and probably put it out on, on our Facebook page. So that's for our consideration. Next item. Do you have anything to change?
Do you have a question, say you want me to offer something? The contract of interest, the closing, do you also have approval for?
Uh, no, uh, at the moment, it's disclosed. Uh, when we move forward with the contract, if, if anyone decides, it may come back to the board for approval.
Okay.
Is that enough?
Okay.
You know. Some of it is, is also, is, is things in terms of that, you know, I know, it's been, it was, uh, yeah, connected with other, to, 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 to. It's all that, uh. Okay. Uh, the next item is, uh. I have, uh, I wish to endorse, uh, the effort of NITOM, the New York Council of Mayorors, um, who are advocating for more aid to municipalities to support infrastructure, uh, particularly during this, uh, time of the pandemic. Um, and so I, I wish to sign on to, uh, a letter to Governor Foltow to increase the allocation from the state budget to support all municipalities. So I'd like the authority to leave the home, sign this, that, and local? Local. You want to leave this? Okay, so you do.
Exactly.
All of the papers?
All right.
Okay. Um. I think, uh, all of it. Oh, okay. Related to the flood mitigation is a community rating system annual certification where we demonstrate that we are, that, that we are doing sufficient outreach, that we are enforcing the code enforcement, the, 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 the flood regulations, the home enforcement regulations, um, uh, as described in our laws. So we, uh, have been, we submitted our certification request, and it has been approved. So this is an announcement that we, we satisfied those requirements. It's our annual, and it helps to support the, um, potential improvements in the flood insurance rates for property owners and non-municipalities. Okay. So, there you have it. Um, one of the items to, to the board with the, for, I think, Bonfire? Bonfire? Well, no. Well, well, attended the trip, we're going to be present for.
A lot of, right?
No.
Boom?
Yeah, um, for February. It's, it's the president's, uh, week, I believe, of, of, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
Uh-huh.
It's, well, uh, nineteen, yeah. And, but, uh, contacted the, um, forces, uh, uh, getting, uh, coming to deal with fire and, so, fine. You already got a motion together, so don't worry about it. No, thank you for, very much, ma'am. Yes, uh, we tried desperately to get it done, uh, trying to replace, um, uh, and the rent, uh, created an unattainable environment for the, for the child. Uh, 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 this time around, uh, we're, uh, trying to get volunteers and to, to, to help build the fire and to make, so if it didn't work out this, this weekend, uh, but we know sometimes it's going for President's weekend, uh, to have a winter activity in the, that, maybe, that snow blow is in, uh, the. Maybe like snowboards and, uh, dirt. Okay. Uh, a couple comments. Is there any mention of the, uh, uh, to, to comment?
People told me I don't have to comment.
That's right.
Are there going to be copies of the hazard mitigation plan available with contact numbers and so forth for every citizen in this village?
Um, we can, posting on the website, it is extensive. We should print out copies for the library and make it available on our website.
You sent me one copy, I meant multiple, as an available.
Well, okay. Thank you, Diane.
Because I think it's important that people have that. I mean, and if a hazard of whatever is drifting, they have a reference point.
Yeah. I think Diane brought, brought attention the need for a, it tends to be a robo-call environment for important announcements in the village that we made for, um, so that people can be notified by phone. It's modeled after what Sam Bacon does, which has a, a facility. So it's, it's, it's some doing to, to, to do that.
That's what we're doing, but it could be a problem if we have a flood and if we add it to, 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 and, and, many of these areas are not available. If you want to have a central point, you may not be able to.
You're talking about, uh...
Hazard, yeah.
Anything else?
Yes, um...
That's right.
You said there are no legal proceedings against this girl.
Nothing, that is correct. There are no legal proceedings against the girl that I am aware of, of our attorney there, who has been given notice.
Have you discussed with the citizens that live on, or live on Mill Street, the removal of that bridge and the property between the, 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 the property that provides for access to those, um, middle schools?
Yeah.
They've got no feedback from the people who live there.
It's a project that was discussed, uh, up until about four years ago, to remove the bridge and to provide, to run a, to get an easement on what is now the flat, flat stone property that said there would be a road that extend Mill Street on land as opposed to a quarter boot. So...
And all parties who are in agreement with that aspect, you mean?
So property owners at that point define the, the easement.
Right, and so, continue? Is it fine in outside or not?
Uh, the, uh, topic has not been, the, the, that topic about the removal of Mill Street which has not been revisited for several years. Anything else? So, here, any other?
Do we have, um, a, a social media, um, newspaper?
Yeah.
What, what, what is it?
About people?
I haven't seen that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. There are lots of them. Okay, obviously they're not certain, but there are lots.
I didn't, did you see the whole lot, the, 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 the? No, it's one and a half. Okay. Um, yeah. Uh, okay, so, so, the couple comments we heard and we've got a motion to, oh, are you, oh. Uh, there's a piece of business that we have to undertake and approve the annual sewer budget that goes through the City of New York. And that has to be approved by January 24th. So we need to convene a special board meeting for the purposes of adopting that budget. And, and so we need a date between the 10th and 24th, as later as 24th, but no later. Cell phone can come up with a date. And depending on people's availability, and when you say, if it's a single purpose meeting, we might be able to do it by, um, Monday. But, uh, it's capable of a harder, I think, today. And, so, can hear from them. Uh, what, what day do we need to, 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 to plan it?
Thursday.
Thursday. So we, we need to do it, um, the 17th or the 21st? At the, at the...
January 20th, March, maybe.
Oh, November, November.
21st. Are you also on the 21st?
I'm interested in. And, okay, January 21st. 21st at 6:00 p.m. Okay. All right, so our next meeting will be January 21st at 6:00 p.m. And the following regular meeting will be February 14th.
Oh, that's great.
Oh.
No, no, see.
Okay. Um, okay. So can I have a motion to all of the athletes? No, no.
No.
And second?
Yes, sure.
Oh, the, the, the.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your attendance and your contribution to our meeting.
As always, thank you.